I could have been there.
Four fifty.
Three or two.
But then we'll add more.
We already spent five hundred.
But then we'll add more.
Yeah. But the contract says five hundred.
We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would, take roll call.
Okay, Ms. Pace Snook, present. Ms. Rick Lou?
Present.
Ms. Sebacher?
Here.
Mr. Shiverducker?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
And Mr. Braun.
Here.
Eight council members present.
All right, at this time, if you would join me, Pastor Williamson's gonna lead us in indication.
Before I pray, I do wish the bounty, the health, and the presence of the Lord to be with all of you in this new year, and that God would continue to use us, we, I prawl, to move our community forward day by day, amen. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, this is the first session of the new year of 2021. We make no complaints, Lord, about the trials that have passed, the challenges we faced, the hurdles that we've overcame. We realize that without your blessings and presence, none of this would have been impossible. Our country is still losing three thousand a day plus to coronavirus. There's still unrest upon the streets of our nation. Our healthcare providers, doctors and nurses, our challenge to the core and beyond daily. Our police officers and firefighters and first responders sometimes are overwhelmed with the calling of their duty. Yet we do not despair. We work together, we pray our faith in the risen Christ, and we work arm in arm in every community that we may prosper according to your providence. That is our pledge in this prayer to this new year. I pray now, Lord, for this session tonight, for those from the community that will participate, for our mayor and council persons, all of our administrative servants. I pray for our public safety officers in fire and police and their chiefs. I lift up, dear God, all those who make this community a blessing, clear down to the boots on the ground that work every day tirelessly. I thank you tonight for the topics that will be covered. I pray, dear God, that the discussions that are held, and if any decisions are made, that they be first pleasing to you. I pray, Lord, that you continue to maintain the needs of the physical health of our city family. That list is not exhaustive. I just pray, Lord, that every need is met according to your providential will. Guide and direct us all until we meet again, and bless this session in Christ we pray, amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Pastor. Okay, at this time, we have an opportunity for visitors to comment to the council. If you wish to speak to the council, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes. All right, seeing no one come forward, we'll move right on. There will be one public hearing tonight to consider the proposed rezoning of a tract of land located at nine seventeen East Walnut in Fulton, Missouri, from its current zoning of M1 Manufacturing District to R2 Residential District. The format of the hearing will be as follows. I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, and then three calls for anyone who wishes to speak in favor. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address. The council will not interact with you during the public hearing, but may choose to do so later in the meeting. The hearing is now declared open. There will be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the matter. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Hearing none, I'll call for the second call. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? And third call, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this matter? All right, there will be three calls now issued for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter being considered. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? And second call, anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? And third call, anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? And the public hearing is now closed, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Next up is the consent agenda, which there are no items this evening. Under unfinished business, we'll get an update here regarding the commercial building lease of five twelve Market Street.
Yeah, I just, I asked Courtney to put this on the agenda because there's been some activity over there that I just want to bring to your attention. The job center that was in that building for a couple of years, they moved into the Chamber of Commerce building. So they've updated that. I think they're fully out now. So we're gonna put that back, probably put it back on the market both for sale and for lease, rent. The last time we put it on the market, we put it on the market at fifty thousand. We put it on the market at fifty thousand, and the proposed rent was seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, but the last tenant was paying five hundred a month. Kind of, the way we got around that was, they kind of balked up to seven fifty, and we said, okay, five hundred a month, but then you can't call us for anything unless the, like, roof caves in. And so, I mean, they took care of their own plumbing issues, they took care of their own window issues. They took care of the building. So I just wanted to let you know that that has occurred, and I'm also gonna let you know that since the city is now fully, fully out of the Whiskey Wild Building, that we'll put that back on the market and/or come up with a plan for its future. So that's, unless there's any questions, I just kind of wanted to give you an update on kind of what's happening on a couple of those pieces of real estate. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a deal question. Where is Whiskey Wild Building at?
You know where they've been wrestling for the past few years?
Gotcha, got it. Thank you.
Yep.
And we'll keep you guys abreast of any changes that you might need to make a decision on about that.
If we sell or if we rent, you know, there'll be a contract coming back to you guys for approval on either one of those properties.
All right, very good. Moving on to new business, representatives from the Fulton Garden Club are here to request a fee waiver for the Youth Arbor Day Celebration, be held on April twenty fourth from ten to two at Veterans Park. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. My name is Diane Neder, and this is Linda Houston, we're with Fulton Garden Club, and we appreciate you putting us on the agenda to hear about the program we would like to do. I believe all of you have one of these maps, if not, I have some more here. Does anyone need one?
We've all got one.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, our target audience is elementary school age children. In addition to Fulton Elementary Schools, we will contact Saint Peters and Kingdom Christian Academy, and we're gonna speak with them about the best way to get this information home to the parents, whether it's, you know, putting a little flyer in their backpack to take home, or if they want to email it. We're gonna figure out the best way to do that. You can see all the benefits by looking at the map, the children and learning about trees and the importance of our environment, and what a great way to celebrate National Arbor Day, which is actually Friday, but we're gonna do this on a Saturday. We're hoping and planning for about two hundred children in attendance. It's difficult to figure that out because we're getting the invitation out, but that's what we're hoping to get. Linda's gonna talk a little bit about the stations.
So Doreen Hook made this map for us, and also Courtney Kofelt was helping us. We also have collaboration with the Fulton Public Library and Scholastic Books for the Free Book Giveaway, and of course Fulton Garden Club. We're hoping to get youth groups like the Echo Group from the Westminster College, the Future Farmers of America, Core Age Kids, to participate and help us with all these stations. But, and of course, the Department of Conservation, we have the Runge Center's going to help us do a presentation, have a booth. So, we're going to give away trees, and they're just little saplings that we usually do at the library with the master gardeners help with that usually. But this year, we wanted to involve the children and get a better turnout, because in the past, when we've done it at the library, there's hardly any turnout, especially if it's raining. We might have twenty people come. So, we're trying to make it more of an event and make it fun for the children. We'll have snacks and games. So I filled out the forms, we're gonna need the three pavilions, as well as the amphitheater. And we'd just like your blessing to be able to give this event and not have to be charged. We will have expenses that the Garden Club will take on. It would be nice if the city would support it. I also have a letter that the mayor, we'd like to involve the mayor in the presentation of the Arbor Day event, too.
I just want to let you know a little bit about the budget and how we're going to be paying for this. I'm applying for a children's grant program from Federated Garden Clods of Missouri. Current costs that we have right now so far is, we're gonna give the kids Backers Potato Chips and Central Dairy Ice Cream. We're gonna have printing some flyers, that's gonna be an expense. I already have eight pounds of bird seed donated from Orshelens to make the bird feeders, pinecone bird feeders. And we'll have to print maps and signage for the stations, so it's easier for them to see where they need to go. I'm still working on donations of water and things like that for the event. I'm also contacting Epso Ma Company for donation of individual tree packages for food, for fertilize, for each child to take home, too, give their trees a better chance to get going. So obviously, our goal for coming here tonight is to see if we can reserve and have the shelter fees waived for Veterans Park for this amazing, what we think's gonna be an amazing event for the trees, excuse me, for the children and the trees. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
While it's not automatic or a requirement, is Fulton Garden Club considered an official nonprofit organization?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the Youth Arbor Day Celebration as requested, as written.
Second.
Pardon, what was that, John?
It's a motion.
A motion.
Oh, you mean a motion, okay.
Yeah, motion to approve Youth Arbor Day Celebration as written.
Gotcha. Do I have a second?
And waive the fees.
And waive the fees.
I gotcha, I knew where you were going with that.
Thank you, Courtney.
Are there any conflicts with that date? Do we know if that's a good date?
That's the only question I have.
Yeah.
Clay, is that gonna be okay?
I think it looks good.
Okay, very good. As long as I get some ice cream, we'll do it.
All right.
Can you bring it for everybody then, please, ma'am?
You'll have to show up and get a tree.
There you go.
So you're looking at taking over that entire section of the park?
Pretty much so, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that, so it's not that big a deal.
And we're gonna mark it to the fact that the events are gonna be happening from ten o'clock to two o'clock, that they don't have to be there for the whole four hours. I figure in doing each station, it would take about an hour and a half if they're walking around enjoying themselves, and that should work then. And I hope to have a good turnout.
And so just as a clarification, this will be, we'll be waiving the fees of rental on all three pavilions, Clay?
Yes.
Okay.
There is a fee for the amphitheater itself, so that would be included, it'd be a total of four reservations.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
And while you're here, I just want to say thank you for all that you all do for our community.
You're very welcome, I say.
Hard, it's a labor of love, I know, for you guys, but it's also something that if you guys didn't do it, I don't know who would.
Thank you, we'd love to do it, it's what we do.
Any more discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, I can click that, and then, oh, sir, you're fine, I'll have Parks and Rec, they'll get ahold of you in the next couple of days, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you all.
All right. Okay, moving on, Parks and Rec. Centers, strength and cardio equipment discussion.
You're the man of the hour tonight.
Yeah.
Maybe two hours.
Yeah, I'll be quick. In your packet, there's some information on a proposal to purchase fitness center equipment and cardio equipment for the new recreation center. We sent it out as a request for proposal, we received four proposals back. We narrowed that to two companies based on price. You can see the other, in the introductory letter, you can see that two companies were considerably higher. Then we went through the final two companies, we went through piece by piece, looked at their different models and variations, compared them to each other, compared the prices, compared the quality, and at the end, we decided to recommend that we go with two different companies for a total of, I think, eighty-two thousand, roughly eighty-three thousand dollars between the two. And that would allow us to purchase the fitness equipment. And when I say fitness equipment, I'm talking about weightlifting machines, weightlifting benches, squat racks, that type of stuff, dumbbells and things like that. So that'll go into the fitness center. And again, we went with two different companies, because again, we kind of compared and went with, if there were similar products, we went with the cheaper price. Or if they were real similar, and one piece of equipment was more heavy duty, had thicker steel, we might have paid a little bit more just to get that heavy duty. So, a lot of their products were very similar, and we felt combining those two vendors was probably the best way to go. With the cardio equipment, we did something different. The reason we don't want to purchase the cardio equipment is that a lot of that equipment involves electronics, it gets a lot of wear and tear, it's heavily used. Trends over a course of two, three, or four years change. Sometimes people like to ride the bikes, three years from now, now they might like treadmills. So, and there's always new stuff coming out. So we felt like the better way to go with this would be a lease. And we did the same thing, we compared the prices, we compared what they were providing. There's a huge variation in all the different amenities. A treadmill, you can get a treadmill that's pretty basic, or you can get a treadmill that has a full-blown TV and headphones and all the whistles and bells and gadgets. I feel like we kind of stayed middle of the road, slightly lower than middle of the road, because we just feel like, we didn't feel like we could afford the high-end stuff.
But it's gotta be nice enough to keep someone's attention and interest as well.
It does, it does. So again, we selected Johnson Fitness for the lease. What we'll be acquiring is about twenty-eight, twenty-nine pieces of equipment. It's around seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars is the retail price they put on that equipment. The lease cost would be about eighteen thousand a year for four years. We would have an option of an additional ten thousand to buy the equipment at the end of the lease. Or we could get refunded the ten thousand after we pay it and renew the lease with newer equipment. They offered us a three, four, and five-year lease. The three was a little more expensive, four was middle of the road, and five-year was slightly less expensive. But we felt, since we're starting out, we weren't real sure if we'd like the equipment in five years, then maybe we'd go with the four-year lease, the price difference wasn't that much. So we felt good with the four-year lease at that price. We had budgeted more money for that, so I feel like we were under budget on that. And I think then again, we get to the four-year, we can reevaluate it, decide, do we want to go a three-year, five-year? Do we want to just buy the equipment? Or do we want to keep leasing the equipment for the next go-around?
Clay?
Yes?
What's the opportunity here under the lease for the maintenance agreement? Is that part, that's all part of the lease, or is that just separate?
Yeah, there's a four-year warranty on the leased equipment, and then there's a yearly maintenance plan where they'll come in and maintenance every year.
And that's part of this price?
That is part of the lease, yeah. And then I think it says on the lease that there's a four-year warranty, which, you know.
I didn't see anything about the PM on the lease that I could find.
On the maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look through it, because there is a document that says that they'll provide yearly maintenance, so that is.
And again, I'm going off the numbers you said out loud, you said the purchase was about seventy, seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
The lease is about the same, so then, and we think it's gonna have a four-year life anyway. What are we gaining from this? What are we gaining from the lease that we wouldn't gain from the purchase? I mean, I'm assuming then we would have to purchase the service?
True, true.
Service agreement on top of it, but did we price that out?
I mean, you'd be looking at, you'd be looking at seventy, eighty thousand dollars right now.
Right.
Again, in four years, you'd be looking at seventy, eighty thousand.
Which is what we're looking at.
So it kind of spreads it out over the course of four years. It gives you options to change out things, I mean, if trends change, you're not stuck with it.
So in two years, we can change things out?
No, four years, four years, yeah.
And again, if we make a purchase today?
Yeah.
And we assume it's got a four-year life, because of trends and equipment and all of that, it sounds a lot like we're spending the same money.
I think there's a very good chance you could probably stretch it out to five or six years, or seven years. And I think the way the city operates, that we would try to stretch that out as long as we could. And then all of a sudden, you got old equipment, you got stuff that's not trendy, and we don't have the money to purchase the new equipment. So we get to four years down the road, if we need a new cop car, we need a new fire engine, those things take priority. And then we're, we don't have new, modern equipment that people want to use.
I think another way we were looking at it was, we don't really know what the cash flow of the rec center's gonna be for the next few years. This is gonna allow us to get in for eighteen thousand versus upfront cost of the seventy-three, seventy-five thousand.
And then we have it out with the lease?
Say what, sir?
We were able to end the lease?
At the four years.
Okay, then we're not gaining anything, because, and maybe I'm not saying enough words, but over, if purchase of this equipment is seventy-five, eighty thousand, and lease of this equipment is seventy-five, eighty thousand, we're acknowledging that this equipment only has about a four-year lifespan because of trends and equipment and all of that, then I'm trying to find the value difference between purchasing and owning the equipment versus leasing the equipment. Now, if you were able to tell me that in two years, if we weren't making, if the utilization of the cardio room isn't of such that we need four of this, and three of that, and two of that, and I can turn in half the equipment and cut half my lease, then that's valuable. But if you're telling me that we can make no changes and no deductions until four years, then I'm not seeing the obvious dollar difference here. Now, if it is because of cash flow, if it is because we don't want to write an eighty thousand dollar check today, and we're gonna want to get the same equipment for the same value, for the same dollar, but we spend four years paying for it, I'm okay with that, too. I, I'm okay with that, too.
Okay. I think that's, that's my primary reason.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how much, there's a, he has a limited amount of money in the bank and the sales tax.
Okay.
I don't know what else he's going to need.
Okay, so this is a way to borrow eighty thousand dollars over and make payments over four years? And, okay. I, I, I accept that answer.
I think another minor advantage to that is at the end of four years, you can just walk away from it. You can say, hey, we want to go a different direction, come pick up your stuff. And you're not sitting there on four-year-old equipment that you're, happened to liquidate or something like that.
Clay, didn't you say after, let me see, after those four years, with ten thousand dollars, you can purchase?
You can. Yeah, you're, we're required to make a ten thousand dollar final payment. If we roll that, once we make that payment, we own the equipment. If we don't want to make that payment, or, or if we don't want to own the equipment, they will refund that ten thousand dollars and they will come pick up the equipment and we can, we can go into a new lease or.
So there would be your savings.
And it, and it is a refund? It's not a credit towards the lease or anything?
We pay it and then they, they refund it if we decide.
So then it's not a savings, but at least it's not a cost?
Yeah, it becomes not a cost for us.
So my, my question is, in, in any lease and any financing whatsoever, and I know it's not a lot of money, but there's thirty-three hundred and seventy-five dollars for delivery and assembly. Are we paying that upfront or, or paying that?
The lease, the lease amount is what, what's stated on there. Yeah, and that's, however they figured that, they, they took the total cost and then that's how they came up with their lease payment. And the same, and, and, you know, same with the fitness center equipment, it kind of has a, a high delivery and installation cost.
Well, I, I understand that there's a cost associated with getting it delivered and set up, but what I'm saying is, is it something we should pay for the thirty-three, seventy-five upfront and not do any financing on it?
I, I think that's an option, if you, if you wanted to take that out of the equation and they could, they could go back and re-figure the lease.
Over four years, it's only eight hundred.
I, and I, and I'll tell you, even though the, the delivery and installation prices seem high, with the other two companies, they were extremely high.
Oh, no.
Ten, ten to fifteen thousand. And that's, that's kind of what pushed us towards these two companies because the price was a little bit cheaper on, on delivery.
And the lease is just with the one company, correct?
The, yes, with the Johnson.
Okay.
And it's, it's a separate lease company, but that's who Johnson uses for their leases. Very good. So we don't need action on this.
There's a, there's a resolution later on in the meeting.
Yeah.
For the lease. The purchase, not so much. The purchase is just a purchase, which we can do. But the lease document requires council action.
Very good. Are there any other questions for Clay or anyone on this?
How much did we have budgeted for the purchase and for the lease?
I think I noted on it.
Is this within the budget?
It was twenty-one.
Yeah, for the lease, I think it was, I think I, I proposed twenty-eight. I think Mr. Johnson put in twenty-one based on a shorter year. And we're at eighteen, so we're, we're a bit lower on that. In my mind, I was budgeting, I was using a guideline of ninety thousand dollars to try to keep us under for budgeting for the purchase of the fitness center equipment.
And we're going to be at a hundred?
No, we're going to be at eighty-three, eighty-two, nine seventy-eight, so.
So a hundred for the purchase, twenty-one for the lease?
No, eighty-two for the purchase.
Budget.
I'm sorry.
How much did you have budgeted for the purchase of the equipment that we're buying?
Eighty-four. Tentatively, in my mind, ninety thousand dollars. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, it's not in the budget.
As a separate item?
As, as a line item in the actual budget. We came up with a furniture fixtures list and we put prices to it and where we needed to stay. And that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
So. Okay. Thank you, Clay. Next up, we, we added this on new business just because of the recent hospitalizations, positives in City Hall of COVID. Topic is, should we go to a Zoom meeting style for our upcoming council meeting? Or, you know, maybe several, I don't know. We, we don't know exactly where. This has been a moving target, obviously, with COVID. But we did close City Hall down to the public. And I'm fine doing it this way. If everyone else is, I just wanted to present the opportunity that if, if folks aren't comfortable meeting in person right now, let me know. Let us know.
I know the Zoom meeting we had last year was not the best meeting. I think we've had these meetings for six months in the chambers with really no major problems. I don't see why we wouldn't just continue.
And infections aren't, we haven't tracked back the source of an infection to actual city work, correct?
The, yeah, as far as we know, we can't prove that anybody's contracted it at work, but we can't disprove that either, so.
Understand.
We, we have done some investigating, contact tracing and, you know, inquired, trying to find out if we're seeing patterns, things of that nature. But unless you correct me, Bill.
I'm, I'm sitting here quietly. You can keep going.
So again, this is just, to be on the safe side, I wanted to present this opportunity. But it sounds like everyone's kind of comfortable with doing what we're doing. We're social distancing, we're masking.
Yeah.
That's what the rules say, so we are doing what we're supposed to do.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see potentially dividers between us and put everybody back up top.
We, yeah, we had talked about that, I think, last meeting or the meeting before.
It's been several, but yeah.
Possibility. We, we can look into that. I don't think, I, I think that's probably something Jeremy could come up with. And I believe that the CARES money would pay for, if it's still available.
It's gone.
Aren't they doing another round this year?
But I don't know that it's going to be for.
CARES is gone.
For that. So either way, it's not going to be a lot of money.
It wouldn't be a lot of money.
We, we could do that.
No, no CARES.
Thank you.
CARES is gone.
That's all gone. Okay.
Unless they come up with another round. Right now, it's gone.
It's December 31st.
Yeah. So that being said, we'll, we'll move on. We'll try to work on maybe getting everybody up, back up top here by next meeting, possibly.
We'll look, we'll try and, try and get it done.
Appreciate your all's patience, too. I mean, I know it's kind of sucks being separated like we are, so. All right, council concerns. I'll start to my left front, Councilwoman Seibacher.
I'm going to hold my mic because it's got a weird clip on it.
Yeah.
I do have one, and I know that we've got some discussion coming up later regarding traffic lights on Wood Street. But I had a constituent, actually several, that mentioned to me about some speed limit signs on Wood Street. There's a section of Wood Street where if you're on the east side of the street going north, the speed limit is thirty. And the same stretch of road on the, excuse me, on the west side, going north, it's thirty. On the east side, going south, it's twenty. The signs are relatively close together, so I didn't know if that was something that we could look at and maybe correct whatever the correct one is supposed to be. But a lot of folks travel that road going to work and from work, and they don't know which one is the correct one, so. That was all I had.
Very good. Check into that. Councilwoman Rick Clu.
I'm nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Stone.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Braun?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Shiverdecker?
I'm good. Also.
Councilman Washington?
Likewise.
All right. Councilwoman Pastner?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Wow. Councilwoman Simmons?
Any update on our recycle bins?
No.
Okay, so they're stalled over in Europe somewhere?
Uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to say it's COVID-related, but anything in, in the two, twenty twenty and early twenty twenty-one, if anything is delayed, it's COVID-related.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, we'll get them when we get them.
Got it. I understand. Okay.
I said today, they're probably the same company that's making our netting that's supposed to be here, too. Very good. We'll move right on to resolutions. Councilman Simmons, if you would, present Resolution Number Thirty-three, Eighty-nine?
Yes, sir. Resolution Number Thirty-three, Eighty-nine. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to the first renewal of a contract with Visasewer of Missouri LLC for sewer evaluation and rehabilitation services and establish an effective date. I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number Thirty-three, Eighty-nine at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good. Have a motion and a second. Cal, if you would?
Yeah, about a, a year ago, we came to you with a contract with Visusewer to, to do sewer lining work. This is a liner that goes inside clay tile pipes and our, that's predominantly in, well, if I point you to the map, all that red area around City Hall, if you put City Hall right in the middle of that map, then everything's kind of surrounding, surrounding it as red. So most of our sewers are clay tile pipe that are, that are in our older sections. So we are, as, as a lot of you know, we have a memorandum of understanding with, with DNR. And part of that memorandum of understanding is that, is that we improve our, our sewer network. So we need to tighten it up is essentially what it comes down to, so, so we don't have sewer overflow, sewer backups, that kind of thing. So this is one of the elements that we use to meet those requirements. So what this liner does is go inside these clay tile pipes and seals them up. Any cracks in those clay tile, in the clay tile tree roots and everything can get in, expand and, and cause more damage to the system. So installing, installing the, the CIPP liner, they call it. It's kind, it's like a, I'll call it a kind of a fiberglass-type product that, that when they, when they install it in the lines, it's got resin in it and they blow heat to it and that hardens up. And they say it gives you, you know, the, the companies that are selling the product say it'll, it's good for at least fifty years. You know, I know a lot of towns use it. It's really good, especially in backyards, neighborhood, you know, you're not tearing up, you know, open cutting, tearing up these sewer pipes. So this past year, if you take a look at the map again, I know it's tough to read, but kind of the, the south part, it says Site Nine, and it's, it's very difficult to read. Let me see if I can get my lower right pointer.
Yeah.
A little delay here, but anyways, it's on the lower right side of the screen. For some reason, I'm having difficulty here. There we go. Right in there. That, that area, there's a total in that, in that area, there's about six miles of pipe. Now, we didn't line every, every piece of pipe in there, so probably a little over half is what we, is what we lined. And there were some point repairs done through Nathan Williams on the contract on, to do point repairs. These are spots that the liner can't go in because they're in such bad shape, so. Again, this is to seal the pipes up, reduce the infiltration going into the sewer system and down to our sewer plant. Bill?
And I don't, I, I told you the questions I was going to ask a couple of days ago. Have we seen any effect at the sewer plant of, of the lining we did this year?
You know, to get a straight answer out of that, you know, you know the answer. I'm not going to give you a straight answer, right?
It depends.
The way, the, the only way for me to give you a straight answer to that, the way I work is, is, you know, back in twenty sixteen, we identified these areas. Burns and McDonald came in and putting meters in our, in, in different parts of our system to segregate it out. And so in doing that, they said, okay, this area is worse than, than this area, so. And they created this heat map up here that we're, that we're attacking. So the only way for me to give you a good answer on that is to remeter the, remeter Section Nine, which we just did. So we are, we're, we are doing that. The Sewer Department has put sewer meters back in Section Nine now that it's been improved. So I can give you a lot better answer if you give me a little bit more time.
And a little more rain.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, we just, we just improved it.
I just, I mean, that was, that was a question I think is going to come back. But, but one thing I can tell you is in the last twelve months, we have seen a significant reduction in the amount of sewer that we backed up into basements.
In that section or across?
Well, the point repairs weren't necessarily all in this section. The point repairs, they were instructed to pick out the locations in town where we've had sewer backups. Let's go and hit those and attack those.
There were a lot in this section, though.
There were, there were a lot of, and, and they're going to do that again this, this coming year. Any, any place we've had sewer backups, we got, we have a sewer camera. We can go in and camera and identify problems and do some of that stuff. But then I want, I want to, I want to keep sewer out of basements. I mean, that's, that's a very primary goal. And another, and a co-primary goal is the reduction of the inflow and infiltration getting to the sewer plant. But I don't want, I really do not want one to overshadow the other. We can spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on lining to help out the sewer plant. Or we can spend eighty thousand dollars and do a lot of point repairs and keep sewer out of a lot of basements. So I want to, I'm, I'm, I'm doing both.
Sounds like a good priority, prioritization, though.
So is what up, is what is in red up here what you guys, Visasewer, is working on?
Yes. What, what we did this past year is this area right here.
One area.
So we spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year just to repair one little area of this red section?
That's a big area.
Well, one, two, three.
That is generally correct.
Yes.
One-sixth of what's red.
Yes.
Right. That is generally correct.
So how much is this new contract going to fix? Or are we looking at every area a half a million dollars?
You look back up at the map, this next contract will fix, so the lining will happen in, in Site Eight, which is right up here. So that's, that's the next spot. This past year, not only did they line, but they camered. So they, they took, they did CCTV, they televised, they're really interesting videos of Site Eight. So they, so we know what to improve this year. Right. So they will, this year, they will take care of that Site Eight. And I think I lost my pointer again. And they will, they will video Site Seven down here.
Just, and, and kind of to elaborate on where Ballard's going, Kyle's going to be standing there giving you exact same speech for the next ten years.
Yeah.
Just throwing out different numbers up on the map.
So we're going to spend four million dollars on that map?
Oh, at least.
Okay. As long as we understand the expectation and.
But that's, again, that's why we're doing it over five, six, seven years.
I can say, sitting here today, I do not remember that being the, the scope of the project when it was presented a year ago.
Yeah, I kind of thought last, last year's contract.
Ten years' worth of work and four million dollars. It was, it was, and again, this is my memory.
That's fine.
A lot of stuff's happened in the last year, is that, that this was going to, that like this year, we were going to do like half is, is kind of what the impression I, I had. So I, so I appreciate the, the level set of the X. So, I appreciate the level set of the expectations, so that we know what we're going to spend and how long it's gonna take.
Years ago, when we really first, when I first started hearing about I&amp;I, we've always said that it's a never-ending thing that we're trying to correct, and we'll be correcting this to the best of our abilities forever, I guess. But one question I have is, the company that Visu...
Visu Sewer.
Visu Sewer, are they pretty good about providing documentation or, you know, video or pictures of the work that they're doing?
Yes, they are. They do a good job with their initial phase of tele, when they video the sewer system, breaking down each, literally each section of pipe that they see a little crack in, and they rank it, and they take pictures and video, and in the end, you get, you get a huge spreadsheet that you gotta go through and decide, okay, they gave me two million dollars' worth of work, you know, how much of this do, you know, do I really? Because you can spend a lot of money, and the thing that everybody needs to realize too, we can only do the best with our system, and what the city owns, there's still the private, you know, the line from your house to the main is a piece of the puzzle that, you know, that we're not taking care of in this process. And I know you've expressed interest in that in the past.
Has that been anything that they've been able to explore about offering that service possibly to reduce cost while they're in the area to the citizenry? Is that anything they do or anything we could...
We've, that's one piece we've not been able to get from them. And, you know, they've talked, they've said, yeah, you know, they've talked about that, but they, to try to get them nailed down on a reduced price, when there's an unknown of what to expect, you know, they don't know what to, you know, it's an unknown. So, you know, if it was offered and you at your house said, yeah, why don't you inspect mine, you may be the only one in that section. You know, it's, I have not been able to nail them down.
Even if it was something like, okay, we'll give you a ten percent discount because we don't have to send a crew out special to your house, we're already gonna be in your neighborhood. You know, even something like that might be helpful.
So, but I would envision that they would have to have a spot to drop in at your house, because making a ninety-degree turn into a sewer line is probably not gonna happen. So, you'd have to have a cleanout or something for them to drop into. I don't know whether that's part of their factor of...
By the way, Kyle, you was talking about clay tile that was looking for the liner inside. This company had just said that they projection fifty years, it's gonna last about fifty years, is that right? Is there any other municipalities that are using them or have documentation?
Yes, literally, you name a city, and they're more than likely, I can tell you, they're doing. From Jefferson City to Columbia to...
There's two main vendors. And for years, we used the other vendor, but they didn't, they worked on the lines we, that we identified, basically. This company looks at it more holistically, they work with us to identify lines together, and then they provide us with the documentation, allow us to do the evaluation and the prioritization.
The home situation, most homes have this plastic pipes anyway, you know, most homes don't have clay tiles.
There's still a lot in this community that...
And Orangeburg?
Used to.
Yeah, okay.
What section, where is Section 8? Or Site 8, or whatever it is. Where physically is it in the city?
Think of Business 54 coming through town, so Market Street, St. Louis, on up kind of Business 54, I'll stop at the middle school ballpark, and we're on that east side. So, about to Wood Street, State Hospital type area.
I know you talked, I know Bill asked the question, how well did we do? I think, you know, we've authorized a million dollars, or going to essentially authorize a million dollars over two years. I think we need to know how well are we doing spending that large amount of money.
I totally agree with you, and that's why, and Daryl does too, that's why he's committing his people to getting that data for you. Right now, I just don't have any data to do a direct comparison of each site. So, this being the second year in and just finishing that first year. But next year, you will have it, hopefully before next year.
Hopefully before, yeah.
Three, four months.
Kyle, the only other comment I've got is, we've gotten various complaints throughout this past year of the trucks being in the road, being in the way, blocking driveways, things like that. Just want to say it out loud again, just, you know, if this is a company we're gonna continue with, then we need to continue that diligence with them to make sure that they're...
We'll improve traffic control and signage.
All right.
Just one last question, sorry. The contract calls out five hundred thousand, yet the resolution says no more than four fifty. Is that a big deal or a little deal, or not to worry about it?
We can make that correction. I don't see it as a big deal, because we're only gonna, whatever you authorize is what it's gonna be, but to make it, to make it match, we can, we can address that.
Well, it doesn't need to match, that's one of my questions.
It really doesn't need to match. I think four fifty is what he identified, and then through the conversations, that things like this don't come in under budget, so...
Yeah, it's a tad more than what we spent last year. Okay. Less is better.
Kyle, one last thing that I would have to ask is, I understand in the contract, it was requested, and we agreed to, in year two, there would be a price increase based on CPI. Can you verify that, just verify the CPI, because I think the CPI at one point seven is a little high.
Yeah, we...
That, I believe that that is probably including food and everything and not just...
We will double-check it, but I know my engineer, Mike Teal, double-checked it for me. I asked him to look at that for me, and he did verify it. That, Visu Sewer actually came to us for a contract renewal last year, a little bit too early, and the CPI was higher at that point, and so we rechecked it once this new calendar year rolled around. But I will do that and make sure that we're looking at the right spot, because you're right. The CPI, if you look at every, everything that it covers, making sure it's the right section. We will do that for you.
Thank you.
All righty. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this?
Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Doc.
I'll call for a question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, Councilwoman Recluff, you would present Resolution 3390.
Yes, Resolution 3390, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to equipment lease with VGM Financial Services, a division of TCF National Bank, for a five-year lease of golf course maintenance equipment. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3390 at this council meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
I think Clay talked about this extensively at the last council meeting, getting some different equipment in out the golf course.
I don't remember that.
Feels like it's been a while.
Golf carts.
Yeah.
We talked golf carts.
When it was during the budget.
What this is, is it's an lease agreement for maintenance equipment. That's been an ongoing problem for us for the last eleven years that I can remember. A lot of our equipment's old, it's, it has a lot of hours on it, it gets heavily used, way more than your personal lawn care equipment. And a lot of it just requires a lot of, lot of maintenance, a lot of repair costs going to the equipment. So, and each year, the equipment gets more and more expensive to replace. And as a city, we just don't have the money each year to replace several pieces. So, we started back, Kenneth Sundermeyer, my course superintendent, and I, we started back in the summer. We started talking with Turf Works about a possible maintenance equipment lease. And I've kind of outlined how it's gonna work. It's kind of different than a traditional lease, because there's some flexibility in it, where you can move pieces in and out. Because a lot of this, some of this is new equipment, some of it is equipment that's coming off lease from other golf courses that Turf Works has access to. So, our plan is to replace fifteen pieces of equipment, or actually sixteen pieces of our equipment. We'll get rid of thirteen, we're gonna repurpose three, and then we're gonna take on fifteen new or used pieces of equipment.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
We're getting fifteen new or used, we're giving up approximately sixteen. Thirteen, we're trading in, three pieces, we're repurposing. Taking a fairway mower and turning it into a teasing apron mower. I know I'm not saying that correctly, but we're making use of it in an area where it doesn't require as much, many hours on the golf course. Lease price is set at around fifty-three thousand, I believe, fifty-four thousand, nine sixty-four. We're not getting a lot of value for our trade-in, the pieces that we're trading in. Some of the pieces that we were talking about trading in, they valued at zero. We're probably just gonna surplus those pieces. It's just, it's just too old, has too many hours on it. If we were to replace this equipment today, you'd be looking at three hundred to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to replace it. If we were to replace our whole maintenance fleet, you'd probably be looking at about five to six hundred thousand dollars. So, I don't think it's feasible for us to think about buying a large chunk of this equipment at one time. I think if we got on a plan where we bought a piece a year, after four or five years, we'd still be falling behind, just because we have equipment that is aging as we speak. The newer equipment will get used, and it's, it's very expensive to operate a golf course. The maintenance equipment is expensive, some mowers cost up to sixty thousand dollars. So, we're looking for a viable solution, and we think, even though it's an increase in the annual budget, we think this will definitely, it's gonna decrease our repair costs a little bit. We've reduced that number in the budget, I think we reduced it by ten thousand. It's gonna save on overtime. A lot of times, our guys are out there, they're mowing, mower breaks down on them. So, they spend three or four hours fixing it, but the grass still has to be mowed. So, they're there an extra three or four hours getting the grass mowed and things like that. So, again, it's just, we spend a lot of time repairing stuff, we spend a lot of money repairing equipment. It's kind of the nature of the beast, it just, the stuff gets used, it gets used heavily, daily. I've kind of outlined just the different mowers and the types of mowers, and how many acres they mow, and how many times a week we use those mowers. And it adds up, especially over the course of five, ten, or fifteen years. So, we feel like, you know, this is probably the best option for us, and we'd like to move forward with the lease agreement and see how it goes.
So, the equipment that you're leasing, we still have to maintain, right?
The new equipment has a two-year warranty, stuff that's coming off lease has a one-year warranty. But yeah, and if, when I say flexibility, the salesman's willing to work with us. If we got a piece of equipment that it's just not performing right, he's gonna go out there and look and say, okay, I got these two pieces of equipment coming off lease on the east coast, we can swap them out. So, that's where the flexibility lies, or say, three years down the road, we have a mower that just, it's done for. We do some swapping in and out and trading in, and we can get that mower and still maintain that price for the next five years.
Clay, I heard you completely, and I don't disagree with what you're saying about repair costs being so hot. How many pieces were we leaving? How many pieces were we keeping to use? And the pieces that we're keeping, what are we gonna spend on repairs this year, next year, and the year after? Would it not make sense to potentially look at leasing all the equipment?
Well, and it gets real complicated when you talk about all the pieces of equipment. But basically, we're trading in thirteen. We're gonna take three mowers and move them to a situation where they're not used four times a week. They might only be used once every couple of weeks. So, and talking to Kenneth, he feels like that we can still maintain it, and we can still get that much use out of it. And a lot of those three that we're keeping, they don't have very much trade-in value, if any. A lot of it's zero.
So, we would spend money to repair them, and they have no cost to them as it is?
We would not spend very much to repair them. So, you know, if you're not using it that often, you know, like we have a, it's not a mower, but it's a SandPro, it rakes the sand bunkers, it has no trade-in value. Well, I'm gonna move that to Parks and Rec, and we're gonna use it on ball fields till it dies. We're not gonna spend very much money on it to keep it going. When it dies, it dies. So, that's the kind of stuff we're talking about. I think, I talked to Kenneth just a minute ago, and before we started the meeting, I think we're keeping five mower-type pieces of equipment. That doesn't include tractors. We recently bought, probably over the course of six or seven years, we bought three new tractors. Tractors have a pretty long lifespan, so we're not gonna trade those in. They'd love for us to trade them in, but it's not something we're gonna do.
So, we're gonna give, we're trading in thirteen pieces, and we're gonna get fifteen pieces of equipment immediately, right?
As soon as the lease is complete, sometime here in January, we hope. Yeah, so we'll be ready to go before the grass starts growing.
We're gonna give them equipment that's as old as nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and fourteen, and somewhere in between, and then we're gonna get fifteen pieces of equipment?
Yes.
Brand-new, or...
Some of it is new, some of it's coming off lease, and that's outlined in the agreement.
Okay.
So...
With the golf course showing such an improvement the last year or so, we need to keep investing in and taking care of it. It's got a good reputation, it's making us money now, let's put it that way, we're not, yeah. We definitely need to take care of our equipment, that's my opinion.
No, I just wanted to make sure we were getting all fifteen pieces now. So, now we've got, now we've got just one to two to three-year-old pieces of equipment instead of...
So, you had mentioned the warranty on some of these pieces of equipment, two-year on new, one-year on used. So, year three, warranty has expired on new equipment, we can trade that piece in?
We can. There's some flexibility, they may come pick it up, we may get an off-lease piece of equipment.
Does the warranty then start over on that piece of equipment?
That would be something I have to check on. So, if we were to move a piece in and out, I'd have to see if that warranty starts at the time we take possession, or...
Or if you're bound to the original warranty for the piece that it's replacing?
No, that's a good question, I'll check into that, that part of it.
And this is a five-year lease?
It would be a five-year agreement. And again, I don't, you know, obviously, prices are gonna go up a little bit, but I think what's gonna keep us from five years from now, or six years from now, having a big increase in this annual cost, is that we do have some equipment that we can trade in. We could opt to keep some of the equipment for a longer period of time. And obviously, that would bring the value of the lease down and keep us into that. So, maybe we want to keep a piece for two more years to keep us under that fifty-five thousand. But again, ideally, we'd like to replace more equipment. I think we started at seventy-five... Um, I think we started at 75. Uh, Mr. Johnson and I negotiated back and forth and he was, he was very nice and let us have 55 and, uh, it, it made cutting a few things. So we understood that, we went through, prioritized what was most important to us, and, uh, that's where we came up with this list.
What was the original wish list as far as what Kenneth was looking for and for, for all the equipment repair, what was the, what was the total amount for that to lease?
Um, it wa, it was around that 75,000, yeah. That was just, that's, that's the first proposal we brought, brought to Mr. Johnson and, uh, it just, at that time, it was too much for the budget, so, um, we agreed on 55 and then, and we went back with, uh, the representative from Turf, Turf Works, traded in some things, went from new to off-lease on a few things. Uh, Kenneth gave up a few things that he liked to have and, uh, that got us down under 55,000.
And I just, I want to repeat what Councilwoman Sebacher mentioned, you know, we may see savings in that maintenance cost over the next couple of years. And, well, and actually, the warranty is just if it, if it's just heart-broke, it's really not even the preventative maintenance, but come year three, we're going to end up, we'll have full cost of any maintenance and repairs on this equipment.
We will, we will.
We just need to make sure when we're, two years from now, when we're looking at that year-three budget, we need to not be conservative with that, with that maintenance budget because we're going to be on the hook for it. Thank you for saying that, then.
Yeah, and, and, and your hope is that, you know, that the maintenance expense for a 2016 mower is going to be considerably less than a 2004 mower.
Right.
That's what you hope.
But we're, we're going to hit, we're going to be in a honeymoon the next couple of years of very low prices and we're just going to need to acknowledge that's not going to be the case.
Yes.
We need to be fully aware of Murphy's Law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure you guys probably kicked it around, but what, what would it look like if we, instead of going into the lease route, purchased 50 or whatever thousand dollars worth of new equipment, or maybe new or used stuff that we've actually had to have right now, and then do that over the next four years?
I, I think the problem is we're at the point where we need 300,000 dollars worth of equipment right now. We're, we're just, and we're past due on that. We're just, we're digging ourselves a deeper hole every year and even if we got on a, a six-year plan or a seven-year plan, when you start getting that six or seven years, you've got a lot of equipment that still needs to be replaced. Um, maybe back in 2004, if we would have got on that plan and, and had a pretty good replacement cycle, but I, I think we're so deep in the hole with it right now that buying things and, and purchasing things each year, or even in a, a big lump sum, is, is not feasible for the city.
And maybe, maybe we just need to really try to spend a little bit of time getting a 10-year plan, you know, where we need to be, so we don't end up in the same situation, you know, five, six, seven years down the road, oh, it's all, we're out again, we need to buy all new stuff again. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and I agree with that, and, and, and like I said earlier, with the other stuff, priorities change from year to year. And, and there's, there's not an endless amount of money, we all know that, and, and sometimes when we get into the capital improvement budget, the city needs different things. And, and we understand that at the golf course. Um, we just got to do our best to try to keep, keep it going and keep everything as up-to-date and running as we can.
Most of us were probably there to take the tour of the, of the golf course and saw the problem. I mean, it's obvious that, you know, there's a need there, but, uh, that, that didn't just happen overnight. So we've been negligent.
And it, it, a lot of it's just the, the nature of the business, too. You know, it's, the, the equipment keeps going up, um, those mowers are expensive and, uh, and that's probably not going to change.
I do agree with what Councilwoman Reclude said about the golf course, and, and are you taking into consideration when you go to five years, the number of rounds that are being played and the, the use of the equipment?
Uh, I, I don't know that the number of rounds, and Kenneth may disagree with me on that, but I don't think the number of rounds affects how many times we mow. I mean, there's wear and tear on the golf course, I would agree, when you have more golfers, but i, if we have to mow twice a week, we got to mow twice a week regularly. I think the weather, when you, when you get long stretches of good weather, um, like we had this year, you're mowing grass law, you're mowing more times a week or things like that. So, um, I think that plays a bigger, bigger role in, in how heavy the equipment is used. But, uh, obvi, obviously, uh, if we can keep those rounds up and we can keep, keep people coming like we did this year, um, it's going to help pay for some of that maintenance equipment and some of that increased expense.
And so then my last question, I think it's my last one, is you have a cost of 54,964.01 per year, and then back in the lease agreement and the variable pa, variable payment schedule, it's 52,707, 51,663, 51,915, over the five years, it changes literally. Why's the difference in that?
Uh, the note, the note on my front page, it says that, uh, the 54,000 includes the lease payment and property taxes.
But we don't pay property taxes?
We have to pay property taxes on the equipment. Um, sa, it's the same situation with the, uh, golf carts. Um, somebody has to pay property taxes on it. Companies like Yamaha, they pass that along to the end user. Okay, so for the first five to seven-year lease that we entered into, we kind of got stuck paying the property taxes because we didn't, we didn't really understand, you know, we didn't, that was kind of new to us. Um, when we re-entered into this new lease with the Yamaha, I told them, we're not paying the property taxes, so TNT...
So they build it in?
They build it in, and, and TNT, they had already quoted us a price, so they decided they need the property tax on that. Um, I told them, we weren't going to pay property taxes on this, we had already settled on a 54,000 dollar price, so it's X number per year plus the property tax.
So who gets the property tax then? Where does that go? Does that go to our county that comes back to our city? Or does that go to where we're purchasing the equipment from?
No, it doesn't, and I, I believe the, the Yamaha property sales tax were paid to the state of California. The check was paid to Yamaha and Yamaha turn, in turn, paid their property taxes in the state of California because they're technically the owner.
Yep.
So if, if, um...
But that's not the way, and, and I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused. That's not the way vehicles are done or anything else, is it, within the city?
We don't pay property taxes.
Yeah.
But we're not, we're not the owner.
We're not paying it.
We're leasing it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not paying...
I'm sorry, I, I'm just, I guess I'm stuck.
And I agree with you, and I've, I've had discussions.
We're borrowing a piece of equipment that is owned in the state of California, somebody's got to pay the property tax each year and so it's...
Yeah, and, and whether Yamaha puts, works that into their original bid price, or they come to us later and say, you have to pay it, but we, we didn't catch it in the first lease. We put our foot down in the second lease and said we weren't going to pay it. And TNT was gracious, they wanted the business, so they said, we'll leave the property taxes on that. And somebody with this lease has went through and figured out what they estimate the property taxes to be. But our, our, we will not pay more than that 54,000.
I still would like to keep a very close eye on the repairs that we're doing on machines, and if it, if it makes more sense to lease the, the equipment, then, then continue to repair equipment. Can we add to this? And, and I'm just going to use a hypothetical, next year, we have a piece of equipment that is not worth repairing. Could we add it to this lease?
I, 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 I think probably for additional cost. But if, if we added a piece, we'd have to take some pieces out or maybe take, move...
So 15 will be the number of pieces, no matter what?
No, it, it's flexible. Let's say we wanted, I'm, I'm trying to think of a good example, let's say I want, I got a mower that breaks down. We call up Turf Works, say, we, we need a replacement mower, okay? Well, to keep that under 54,000, I may have to give him one of those pieces of 15 pieces of equipment that's brand-new with my broken-down piece of equipment, and then he comes back and brings me two off-lease.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? That's, that's part of the whole negotiation.
Or, 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 or lease to 62,000.
When you're, when you're moving things in and out. And I, I see some benefit to that, um...
On the other hand, if, if there's something we need, Turf Works would be glad to modify the contract.
Well, and, and that's my question is, is...
There, I mean, Turf Works isn't going to hold us to this as long as any modifications and changes are to their benefit.
Yeah, if, if we need a new mower and, and we're willing to pay another 3,000 dollars additional on the lease, then they're jumping all over that, yes. But again, from, from my standpoint, my budget management standpoint, we want to keep it under that 55,000 dollars. We feel like that's where we're comfortable.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Okay, moving on to Resolution 3391, if you would, Mr. Stone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3391, a resolution authorizing the mayor on the behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to an equipment lease with macro lease of Plainview, New York, for a four-year lease of cardio equipment. I make motion to pass Resolution number 3391 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Um, for those of you tuning in, we, this was our work session tonight to discuss the, uh, proposed lease of the cardio equipment for, um, for the new rec center. Would someone want to do a quick rundown, either Mr. Johnson or...
Clay, come on up.
Um, as I, as I mentioned before, it's a, it's a four-year lease for the cardio equipment, um, approximately 18,000 and some change a year, with the option to, uh, buy the equipment for an additional 10,000 at the end of the lease. It's approximately 20, 28, 29 pieces of equipment, and it would go in, it'd be things like, uh, elliptical machines, treadmills, bikes, that kind of stuff, and it would be used to fill our, our cardio room at the rec center.
And part of the reasoning behind the lease, instead of purchases, uh, the fact that, um, the equipment is, got a lot of electronic stuff in it that goes bad and wears out and it, and part of this lease is going to be the warranty that goes with it as well as preventative maintenance.
That's correct.
So. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right.
Thanks, Clay.
We'll move, uh, into ordinances, we've been here quite a little bit, but we're pretty close, guys. Y'all want to take a break or burn through this?
Push forward.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. Um, wasn't really anything worth discussion on the last resolution number, but in the terms and conditions, there is an item on here that a preventative maintenance agreement is available for all equipment. Did we...
Continue.
For the cardio equipment.
Okay.
In the standard terms and conditions, it's part of our attachment from Johnson. It's not necessarily from the lease, but it's from the Johnson Fitness and Wellness. It states there is a preventative maintenance agreement available. Was that something that we...
I thought we talked about that.
I think Clay's going to look into that.
That, that is part of it.
It is part of it, okay. Thank, I, I couldn't remember if that was something we were still exploring, looking at, or had decided on. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll move right on into ordinances now. Councilman Braun, if you would, present Bill number 1602.
Bill number 1602, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the county of Callaway, Missouri, allowing the continued collection of household hazardous waste and electronic waste for county residents, establishing a fee and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to put 1602 for second reading at next scheduled meeting.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Based on the conversations we've had, we, including this money in the budget, I asked Courtney to draw a little contract to get the county to sign it and like enter into this agreement so we know that they're going to pay the 10,000 dollars. Gary and the crew across the street reviewed the proposal, they did not change a word, they have already agreed to and signed it and submitted a copy to us. So it's, it's good to go, they're good to go. Um, I think it's a, it's a reasonable agreement. I would, I would have liked to seen them say, we'll cover half, but, uh, they wanted to hold it to 10,000 dollars, so that's 10,000 we did not get last year.
And we're also changing the service to once a month instead of once every other week, so the cost of the whole project may go down enough that next year, 10,000 may be half. I don't know, that may be a little bit optimistic, but, uh...
Or maybe hire Mr. Mayor, just everybody at home, home, taking care of home improvement projects in 2020.
You're a glass-half-empty guy, aren't you?
Well, another reason...
I, I know latex paint is coming off of it, though, so I'm just...
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that might, that might have a significant impact if we start denying latex paint. Now, that's, you know, four or five pounds is four or five pounds, but it doesn't matter what it is, and if we can deny that three-quarters of a gallon of paint, uh, it'll be, it'll end up being a cost savings to the program.
I did my part this week by responding to a comment on Facebook to keep it out of the hazardous waste. Doing my part, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Bill number 1603, if you would, Councilwoman H. Snut.
Yes, Bill number 1603, an ordinance amending section 110-248 speed limits Fulton City Code by removing an existing speed limit and acting new speed limits in lieu thereof in relation to a flashing signal near a school zone and establishing an effective date. Make a motion to, um, place Bill number 1603 for second reading at our next scheduled council meeting.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I have lots of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um, this ordinance changes the speed limit on Wood Street between 8th Street and 10th Street, but it does not discuss between 10th Street and Highway Z. And if I recall, either last year or the year before, we, we've changed that entire stretch of Wood Street from Highway Z to 8th Street to 20 miles per hour because there was so much confusion about the school zone there by, uh, St. Peters, and then it jumped up to 30 when you got near the, near the golf course line, and then it changed back to 20 and...
That was my issue earlier.
So why, it, it, one, why does this ordinance only cover 8th Street to 10th Street? And I don't see any discussion in the, in the traffic commission's minutes of 10th Street to Z.
Yes, the goal here is, is to cover that area and, um, I probably did a bad job of, of putting that in there, is all I can tell you. The goal of, uh, at the traffic commission, it was discussed, uh, that whole section through there from Z all the way down. Um, the idea is when flashing, uh, between 8th and 10th would be 20 miles per hour, when not flashing, that whole section is 30 miles per hour. When, uh, when it is flashing, the section, uh, that's not between 8th and 10th is still 30 miles per hour. So, um, that is the goal, if we can get that... If we can get that, if we can get that re-described or edited to, to make that happen, that, that is what we're after.
And where exactly will the flashers be placed on that stretch of road between Eighth and Tenth?
The flashers are placed just very slightly north, I'm going to say sixty-foot north of Eighth Street, and the other flasher is right at Tenth Street.
Okay.
Just to, just to clarify as well for the ordinance. So basically, what, what we're talking about right now is exactly where you're talking about those flashing signals, Kyle. Eighth Street to Tenth Street is what we're designating as a school zone when flashing, anything not designated. So everything from Tenth Street to Route Z is thirty miles an hour by definition of this ordinance.
But you're still leaving out the, the Catholic school.
Right.
There on Wood Street, so.
Correct. This, this ordinance...
This flashing light will not cover that.
No. This ordinance will take that school zone out effectively and make it uniform with the rest of the city at thirty miles an hour.
Right.
I'd like to see Eighth Street to Z twenty.
Which is what it is now. I mean, we, we did that.
But I mean, with the flashers, it would be a school zone, and if memory serves, that changes the... So make it twenty miles an hour for Eighth Street to Z on Wood, all the way twenty. So there's no question, is it thirty years or twenty years? But if the flashers are flashing and there's a citation issue, then the, the citation, the fine, is different, because you're in a school zone at that point, not just a regular city street.
Twenty miles per hour.
Right.
I, I can only tell you that the traffic commission's recommendation was to make that thirty miles per hour through there normally, unless when flashing. So it heightens the awareness when kids are getting picked up, dropped off, walking to school during those, during those important times.
And I understand that, but we're also talking about a park and a bicycle path and sidewalks where there's a lot of foot traffic all times of the day.
Understood.
And when, when heading south, you're going down a hill to a, only a two-way stop, not a four-way stop, which is creating even more, and we're already making a change on Eighth Street coming west. We've already changed that to thirty miles per hour. So now we've got, we've got two roads coming down, all around a park, all around a school, our new rec center. Everything's going to be thirty miles per hour coming together at only a two-way stop. And we've completely discarded the school zone at St. Peters on the other end by Z.
So could we send this back to the traffic commission for maybe some reworking, maybe a second look, with some recommendations to make it more fluid, make it more understandable for the constituents?
So just, so, but, so just leave the speed limits the way they are and just install the flashers? Which is, which is a very viable option, just to draw attention that, hey, guys, you're in a school zone and it's flashing.
Well, let me ask you, I, I do need to clarify something in my brain. What we did before, from Z to Eighth Street for Wood, is it, is it thirty mile per hour with a school zone? Or did we designate that from Z to Eighth as a twenty mile per hour zone? That's my...
From seven-thirty to four-thirty, it's twenty miles per hour.
All, all school zones listed within that section of the code are always twenty miles an hour, seven-thirty to four-thirty.
I'm, I'm understa-, I was just trying to recall. I thought what we had done before was just make that, make it twenty from Z to Eighth. Not school zone, not Monday through Friday night, is it, is it Martin Luther King Day, is it?
It's seven-thirty to four-thirty.
It's all, it's all encompassing as a school zone, that entire stretch currently.
Okay. So it's thirty all the other times, but it's school zone during those times. We just expanded the whole, the whole section to be one school zone before.
Essentially, yes.
Right.
Okay.
Jeff, I think also on that situation when we was discussing that, that there was that, a school where, Christian school that used to be there.
Right.
MSD from, from that area was twenty, and then they just made it thirty until you get down to the stop sign. I think that's what, but went from twenty to thirty.
But, and now we're, we're making it, we're going to make it obviously thirty coming the other direction. I mean, right now, if you, if you look on Wood Street, all you see is twenty mile per hour. Yeah, it may say school zone, but all you see is twenty mile per hour. Okay.
So. I, I thought there was some discussion when this all started. I know there's been a lot of confusion since Wood Street has been built as to what is the doggone speed limit. But I thought there was a discussion recently about the area on Tenth, on Wood Street near St. Peters, that all of the school traffic takes place on Z. It doesn't take place on Wood Street. And that's why everything was moved further south in terms of the twenty mile an hour speed limit.
But we have walkers in that area that walk to that school on Wood Street.
And you still have utilization of the driveway as well.
And you've got the, the gravel driveway that comes out onto Wood.
I'm telling you what I seem to remember, that...
That was part of the discussion.
That was in a discussion, is that's one of the reasons why the speed limit, why that was not considered a, going to be considered a school zone.
That was, that was part of the discussion. I know at the traffic commission meeting, it was discussed that it was felt that St. Peters is, is far enough from Wood Street, their main access really is through Z. Z is not twenty miles per hour where their main access is.
And that was going to be my next question. I, I don't travel that area during the day enough. We, we don't have flasher lights in front of St. Peters and designated school zone on Route Z right now, do we? We do not.
No.
No, but we don't have control of it, right? That's the state.
Well, we did the same thing with Barkley School. We've got permission from MoDOT to add the flashers and change the speed limits and all of that.
Yeah, I was not part of that discussion.
Right, but it would be the same process if we wanted to designate that stretch of Highway Z, correct? Just going down that rabbit hole a minute.
Yeah, it would be a process. You'd have to get MoDOT on board. They would probably want to do a traffic study of, of that area. Because like Barkley, I think it's twenty-five miles per hour is what it is, so.
Yeah, while flashing.
Um, right, while flashing, so.
Could we get some accident data from that area possibly to help make this decision?
Yeah, we can, we, we map all our tra-, the traffic accidents that we get from Chief Myers and his group, so.
Would anyone like to see something like that? Anyone?
I, I'm, I'm just looking at what we all have in front of us from, from Mr. Teal. And would it not correct the situation if we didn't remove the highlighted area that he was speaking of from Wood Street, on Wood Street from Eighth to Z, Monday through Friday? We've removed that. That's exactly what we're talking about, it being the exact, exactly what we're talking about, but we've removed something that we already had in there.
Yes, we're remo-, what he's highlighted is that we're removing the school zone by St. Peters. Is that what you're saying?
But that would, if that wasn't highlight, if that wasn't removed, that would correct the issue, would it not? From, on Monday through Friday, from seven-thirty to four-thirty.
You essentially, by leaving that in there, could maintain the school zone all the way to Route Z. There still needs to be a specification as to the area where the flashing lights are. And then you get it.
Well, could the flashing lights just be a...
It could just, it could just be an enhancement.
An enhancement. Just leave everything that, that's what I said.
So don't change anything.
Don't change anything. Just put the flashing lights on.
Just the flashing lights are there.
Is the traffic commission on board with not changing anything?
I, I would, I would think that that's a viable option. I don't think it, I don't think the traffic commission's going, going to cry about it.
I think one of the concerns was somebody, I think, I think someone mentioned that One Direction has a speed limit of thirty, and the other one is coming as twenty.
Okay. We can look at your ordinances and call up and get that fixed.
And I think some of that was done maybe just a little ahead of this meeting. So in, in anticipation that these are the changes that were going to be made. So, yes, I think that's a very easy fix.
I, I think that, I think that issue has been fixed. If it hasn't, we'll fix it again. I know it did come up, and, and actually Chief Myers called me on it, and we went, we went over and, and I believe took care of it. But if there's been something that's fell off or been removed or whatnot to make it confusing again, we will fix that immediately.
Is that, Councilwoman Sebacher, is that something that would be acceptable to you? Does that, does that correct the issue?
I, I think so. I mean, I, I look at it from, yeah, it's, it's an alert, it's a, it's a great notification. But I, I, from the penalty side of it, again, that would change it. If it was school zone times, the penalty would be different, and I think that often that can be a good deterrent as well.
Yeah, so it would, it would be all the way, all the way from Eighth to Z, Monday through Friday. I, I think this whole thing was brought up last year by a previous councilwoman, where she was the crossing guard in front of Bush.
Yes.
And she experienced a lot of people who were essentially going too fast.
Yes.
And she asked for some sort of flashing lights to be put up, to warn people that they're coming to a crosswalk, to be careful. So I think the flashing lights designating a school zone, changing the speed limit from thirty to twenty is not, was not impo-, as important then as warning people, we've got kids crossing the screed, street up ahead. So however we fix the speed limit...
Well, the speed limits are, as I understand it, the speed limits are fine.
Well...
Kyle will go back to traffic and say, "We're going to leave the speed limits the way they are. We're going to sign it appropriately for it to be a school zone from seven-thirty to four-thirty, Monday through Friday." And he's going to install the flashing lights on Wood Streets north and south of Bush.
They're installed.
Just, just as a heads-up, hey.
Yes.
You're coming into something you need to pay attention to.
I think that's perfectly fine.
Well, I know previously, a lot of people traveling up and down Wood Street are confused as to what really is the speed limit. But some people think it's twenty miles an hour all the time. Some people think, but when it's a school zone between four-thirty and, or between seven-thirty and four-thirty, they're going to get a double ticket. It's just the signage was confusing. And...
Give, give Kyle a month to get the signage corrected, and we'll, we'll just, this ordinance will die.
Well, the blinking light that they put out there on, on those, C and out on Southwest? Okay, since that blinking light's been up, and it's not even our road, but it was done, has not been on accident. It's a warning, people see that blinking, and I did hear it.
I live near Wood Street, and I'm not sure how many accidents we really had on Wood Street.
No, and the officers can tell you, but...
Okay, but I know there's a lot of people who like to go fast on Wood Street.
Oh, I know. I agree, I know, I, yeah.
So... Yeah.
Yeah. That is quite a, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm looking for...
What I think would be most appropriate is, we already have a motion and a second on the floor to move this to the next reading. If that is not the desire of the council, you are each free to vote that down, and it would immediately die, rather than getting additional motions and going through all that.
Kyle, do you think you could have it done by the next council meeting? Two weeks?
Couple weeks or not.
He will try.
Traffic to this meeting, Lawrence?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have put together a, a traffic commission meeting pretty quickly, so. We've got a representative right here, and we can have a quorum pretty quick, so.
Or we can, we can let this die, and they can bring something, if they want to change something, they can bring it back to us when they're ready to bring it back.
We'll not bring anything back at all.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Wow.
Phew, okay. All right.
Moving along.
All right, so, so if everybody's clear, or is there any more discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no?
No.
That dies. Moving on.
But thank you, Kyle.
Councilman Washington, if you would, present Bill number sixteen oh four, please.
Bill number sixteen oh four, an ordinance reclassifying, under the zoning ordinance, a tract of land known as nine-seventeen East Walnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. Planning and zoning recommend, recommend that the council approve this at the next schedule, for our second reading at the next schedule for the council meeting.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second.
Just kind of a heads-up, going from an M-one to an R-two is more restrictive. Generally, when we come to the city council, we're trying to go the other direction. But residential properties are not allowed to be built in an M-one. And that area is definitely well-suited as it, as there's houses all around it. Changing this to R-two is very appropriate.
The way I read this, it's people that are in the surrounding houses that want to change this to an R-two. It's not somebody wanting to take the, move in and build a...
The owner has to request.
Yeah, the owner of that property requested.
Yeah.
Okay.
And all, all properties within a hundred and eighty-five feet of the boundary are contacted.
Okay. But they've all said it's okay.
They've all, so it's, yeah, go for it.
Yeah. Yeah, we had the, the hearing at the planning and zoning meeting, and we only had basically positive reactions to it from surrounding properties.
Very good. Any more discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That will move on for our next meeting. We've got second reading now, just one bill, Councilwoman Sebacher, if you would, Bill sixteen oh one.
Yes, sir. Bill number sixteen oh one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to an application for the Business Fifty-four Collier to Westminster Avenue improvements project under the Transportation Alternative Funds Program and Cost Share Program of the Missouri Department of Transportation. I make a motion to place Bill number sixteen oh one for third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Third.
Sounds good. Have a motion and a second. We did talk about this at our last meeting. Is there any discussion or questions on what this is about?
And this, we have not received the funds from the state, is that correct?
Correct. This is...
This is part of the application process.
This is a wish.
Gotcha. Okay.
But... Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? And if you would, again, Ms. Sebacher.
Yes, sir. Bill number sixteen oh one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to an application for the Business Fifty-four Collier to Westminster Avenue improvements project under the Transportation Alternative Funds Program and Cost Share Program of the Missouri Department of Transportation. I make a motion to place Bill number sixteen oh one for final passage at this council meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Very good. Counsel, uh, Madam Clerk, if you would, take final roll call for questions.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sebacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Ms. Paesno?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good. Bill sixteen oh one passes. Announcements, our next meeting will be held Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, right here, live in person. Our candidate packets for the offices of First through Fourth Ward, council members, and city prosecutor and attorney are still available in the office of the city clerk, Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. I'm sure we can do that via drive-through?
Yes. We will make it work.
All right.
Or we can make an appointment, correct?
Correct. So if you're picking up a packet, I'm happy to get you a packet at the drive-through. If you are filing a packet you've already picked up, you do need to make an appointment and comment.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that filing opens December fifteenth, closes January nineteenth at five PM. For additional information, call City Hall Clark at five-seven-three, five-nine-two, three-one-one-one. Any other pressing announcements? All right, thanks for a great meeting, for hanging in there with us, guys.
I wish to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes.